What grade are you in? Oh, okay, my daughter is the second grade. It's J.A.P.
That was last time. I'm nineteen. We just started coming home. Oh, you mean this period? Yeah.
You want to get some pictures of your decorate?
We're going to be first.
Painted the eyes black and the mouth black and the nose orange.
Cool. And what can you do, the idea to use a, um, lipo? Yeah, that's a great, great idea, good way to recycle it. Do you think you'll make another one for your at-home? Yeah? Well, great job. What's your name?
A.I.B.T.S.
Great. Thank you for, for, hey, Aiden, sorry.
Hey, you told me you're good.
Wants to tell you about his. Oh, that's an interesting one. What's your name?
Johnny.
Johnny, is that with an H? J.O.H.
And also you.
I'll choose one.
Doesn't have one.
Yeah.
I have a Christmas tree.
Oh. Well, what can you add?
Um, because, um, one of those are normally thrown out a lot. And, um, I will never be used to them.
Uh-huh.
So, then I made this. And I forget.
Oh. That's not a year.
Well, I spent a lot of.
Where'd you find that?
Well, we bought it.
Uh-huh. That's cool. Right, what's, do you want to, yeah, and do you want to get one with the whole, kind of shirt on too?
Might not have, no.
Yes. Gentile. And what was the C.M.T.I. like?
Great, I'm not great at it.
You have the other speaker?
Uh, wait, no, I'm here with the art. Here with the art.
All of this.
I mean, a trophy for a campaign.
Yeah, no, that's, just yours.
This is yours here?
Yeah. Yeah, those were the last one.
Joey. Melissa. Yeah, Melissa. Sign them Joey M.A.R. Is this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but I can move it if you want. You need to move it.
Well, I wanted to make.
Yeah, we'll put it on the script.
I shot my house and I thought a pickup would be a perfect size to do it.
Yeah. Your parents.
Yeah.
Do you feel, do you ever feel bad, like, you have to throw them away after using them just one time? Do you feel like, oh, they're a pair of those?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, do you guys do any other projects at your school that you do with recycling?
Trying to think. I know we do.
I know, it's a.
I know we've made ornaments like these in the past.
You could tell her about how we did a whole show. Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Everything in the show.
Mrs. Cavalli.
It's hard to remember.
Mrs. Cavalli, because you're not Cavalli family. Uh, does recycling projects all year long. And when they have their big dinners, they make the most fantastic centerpieces out of pop-ups and stuff like that. So she's my big recycling promoter, reuse really, the reuse. And not only does it look nice, she's saving, uh, Holy Family money on supplies and stuff, so.
Was it mostly like the six, seven days, where you make, you make these giant sculptures, right?
Oh, really?
Out of, uh.
Yeah, we made faces of like fire and.
Fire and ice?
Oh, that's cool, yeah.
We're currently working with Y.A.S.U. to have something displayed in their art department.
Want to get the rest of those on? Excuse me. I appreciate this. Tell Marley guys to hi. Hi, excuse me.
Get up and do the pledge and if you, if you nice young people would lead us through that, we would like that.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America for which it stands, one nation, on our heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everybody for coming. Uh, we have special guests with us today. And, um, we are going to, I'm going to open up the meeting. This is the Mahoney County Commissioners Hearing Room. Regular meeting number forty-eight, Thursday, December twelfth, twenty nineteen, slightly after ten. And what we're going to do is we are going to not have public, uh, here, uh, public comments today. We're going to go right into our presentations. And, um, the first people that we will hear from will be our Green Team. And that will be Lou and Mary and Peg. And I'm going to, uh, let Peg start this off. And, um, I want to thank you all for coming to the meeting. I really appreciate the fact that you're here. And shows that your interest in recycling and being a part of Mahoney County. This will be televised and you will be, um, you can, you can watch yourselves on TV tonight. And, um, Mr. Roller will give you that website. Peg?
Thank you. I, I'm shocked at the amount of students we have from Holy Family School. All the students and parents here, uh, did a great job in getting the kids down here on last minute notice. I've never done the ornaments before. We always do the placemats. But every ornament on this tree was made by students in Mahoney County. The majority of the ornaments were made by Holy Family students. And what the Green Team likes to do, it's reduce, reuse, and then recycle. And all those ornaments are made from reused material. We're known as a throwaway society because when we are done with something, we just throw it away. And this instills in the children the idea of what else could I do with this? And they made great ornaments and the parents and the kids are very creative. Mrs. Cavalli, would you stand? She's the art teacher at Holy Family. And, uh, look at Mary, stand, look at Mary. And she, she does reuse crafts all year long. She'll have displays of them. Uh, she makes, uh, centerpieces for the home and school functions, big important functions, out of pop bottles that you swore she bought from a very expensive store. So let's get Mrs. Cavalli in here. And Mrs. Stink and Ed Blazer got all these kids together. What we're going to do is we'll go row by row, just go up, try to find a place real quickly. Um, they took them off the tree, so they should be able to put them back on. If not, just set it on the ground and we'll fix it later, okay? First row, go on up.
They're allowed to put it on the tree?
Yeah, I said, put it on. Yeah. They took them off the tree, so they, I told them, try to remember where they got them.
Decorating a tree, wherever you put them, it's okay.
We do the ornament contest every year, but the commissioners were so gracious to let us put them on their tree.
That's the nicest tree we've ever had here.
You like it? It has heart, it has heart.
Yep. Those are amazing ornaments.
Aren't they?
And we have cookies.
Please, everybody grab a cookie. After you put a tree on. We can't give you coffee, but we can give you the cookie.
The next one?
So mine's not here, but so I use. Are you a water? Water and I use them to make ice cream.
Six foot tall. We need to go play basketball.
Kids, um, I'll leave that to the teachers, when you go back. If you're allowed to stay for the meeting, please stay.
You want to go back to school?
That's really cool. Stay and see the, the meeting.
Oh, yeah, if you're allowed. If you're allowed. Uh, that's up to the parents too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Peg, I want to thank you.
Where's Mary, Greg?
And I, I want to thank everyone for coming here today. Uh, Lou, I want to thank you as well, who's the director, and Peg.
And there's Mary.
And Mary Rendroni, I want to thank you all for coming in and doing this today. And this will be an annual event. So, uh, regardless where they let you put the tree next year.
We can do both next year if we can.
You can do both next year. I'm very offended that, um, Mel Creek Park would not allow us in this year. And, um, I will make that statement to Erin Young when I see him.
But we only have this now.
But this for our, I'm, I'm so excited that you're here. Because this is the hub of Mahoney County. This is Mahoney County. This is the most beautiful building in Mahoney County. It's historical. I don't know if you, if you have time, but Mary and Peg could go through the reticency, the beautiful tree that our staff upstairs, all decorated. And everyone in, in the courthouse have part of decorating that tree as well. So please go up and check it out.
And how many of you, uh, young adults have had an opportunity to participate in the placemat contest as well?
Three of them are Holy Family winners.
So, so that's a great opportunity as well, that you, you know, get everyone together to celebrate, you know, the job that everyone did on the placemats and let you know where at, and the restaurants around the county, that you could go and see yours.
I have, I have to tell you that Peg and Mary both do wonderful projects at our school, especially with our student councils. And we're working on improving some of our recycling projects and I really appreciate it. But Mrs. Cavalli could use anything and make something beautiful, anything. So you want us to keep. I've never seen anyone like her. And she encourages the children with all of these projects. So I must say, I, I really appreciate it and we appreciate being invited.
Well, Mrs. Roller has a lot of cats that she could bring over from the place of cats. You know, maybe, maybe we could, maybe we could pass out a kitten for all the students. That would be a wonderful Christmas present.
I do think we're going to leave because some of our parents didn't commit to stay. Anthony, you have anything before you leave?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody. You did a great job, Miss Cavalli. I could use some art lessons. I could bear to draw a stick figure. But you got it going on. These kids are wonderful. Wish you all a happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Please come back and see us again. I'm a Poland guy, was born and raised there, went through all the schools. So it's very nice having you here.
Thank you.
And I would say the same. Merry Christmas to all of you.
Would all the young people want to come up and stand behind us?
Take a picture, it's great.
Get a picture up there.
And, and everyone, when you leave, take another cookie.
It's like, I'm not going to.
Let's go. You've got great eyes for Green Team.
Yeah, sure, who wants to come in behind me? Come on. Sit on, sit on Anthony's lap.
Yeah.
Put his shirt on.
I have a friend, Sue, that looked like she could be your mom.
All right. Big smiles now.
Do you have everybody in?
Smile.
Say, "Holy Family."
Got it?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So everybody wants another cookie, grabbing one more for the row. Grab two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We love cookies.
Why didn't you bring us any?
You're going to be ready for lunch. I'm sorry, you tried God, I'm really.
That is true.
Yes. Here's Holy Family, mad class, the way it starts goes.
Go upstairs and see the tree. Thank you. Sing it, Carol. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to continue. We're going to continue with the meeting.
Give Dennis one. Give Dennis a golden.
All right, um, we're going to continue. Terry from the Helms Foundation is here. We have two, two presentations today. Uh, and Terry was here last year with the Helms Foundation. It is, uh, art therapy that she is, uh, involved with and, and has a wonderful place that she is working out of now. Maybe you can give us a rundown of what's happened in the first year of your Helms Foundation and the fundraiser that you just had. Um, and introduce your, your group.
Good morning. We, we did, we just had our, our second annual fundraiser we had at the V and O, which is a beautiful venue to start with. Um, and since I started the foundation a little over a year ago and introduced art therapy into the mental health and recovery system, we now have a art therapist. Do, they have a masters in art therapy and they have licensing in counseling or social work. So we have Heidi, who is at Alta, and we have Holly that is at Meridian right now. And their programs are currently growing. We're taking interns to bring, to develop those programs and to bring employment back into our community. Um, these facilities have been here for years and years and, and are accessible to everyone. Except this was not something that was introduced here. So now that it is starting to grow, um, we are again, starting programs and people have reached out to me. We have had calls from the courts. Um, we've had from, you know, there's Judge Russo, um, who I'm working with, Judge Delik, uh, who we're also working with. And also outreach from Help Hotline, Help Network, from their facilities that they work through, um, from the drop centers and group homes that are out there. And I received a call in which I never knew, a facility that is for school-aged children. It's an undisclosed, um, facility that handles children who have either HIV or family members that have HIV, which is generally, you know, through the drug, drug use. And they reached out to us. And, you know, to kind of explain art therapy, you know, I don't think we really have the time for that because I learned a lot and it took me a year to learn what I have learned. But it is not a canvas. It's not just pencil, paper and that. It is not. It is therapeutic art. And I think, you know, um, I work with potential development very closely. And this is actually one of the pieces that Carol has purchased. And I have Jody here just to kind of, kind of give you a little bit of overview of what we're doing there. And, um, Justin, who is, is very familiar, um, because that is one of his art pieces up there also. And this here is Melissa. Melissa Finnegan, and she's sitting right in the back next to Jody, um, who also has a wonderful story. And it, it has given these individuals a voice. And the other day, I had an art therapist show up at my office and we had to go tour and we went to go meet some of these facilities that were asking for services. And unfortunately, they are not billable facilities. So therefore, the expense has to fall on somebody and that would be me. And that is why I've had the fundraisers, to try to build up those monies to pay for somebody to go in and provide these services and programs. And I'm going to, and I started grant writing and I don't know who's ever wrote a grant in here. Has anybody had to do that? It's a nightmare. My gosh, people go to college for this. I, I want to rip my tooth out because it'd be, it'd be faster. It'd be easier, less painful and so much simpler and it would heal faster. It, I, you know, and, and God bless, people are so helpful. People want to do good and it is very hard. When you say good and money, they don't go together. And it is quite the struggle. And people have been wonderful. And I met this wonderful lady who was willing to work with me. And, um, she came in and Jody had a bunch of, um, artwork from the kids, um, at Potential. And this was one of them. And I purchased this for my, my one son, it just, it, it, you know, I thought of my one son is, is what it is. And she comes in my office and I have art all over that needed delivered. And she picked this piece up and she looks at it. Because this is a professional, I just look at it like this reminds me of my kid, you know? She looks at it and she says, she looks at it and she turned it, she turned it, she says, "Where did this come from?" I said, "It came from Potential Development School for Autism." I says, "Which I'm looking for a specific individual for there." Because again, that's an out-of-pocket expense. She says, "I would love to meet the person who did this because there is something going on." Now. And I, and I, I don't like to talk, it always comes to this. Um, and we're working with that. Now Melissa, God bless her, is a patient, client and a patient of our art therapist that we have at Alta. And she has given me the approval, um, to meet her and give her a story. Now, when I met Melissa, it was in a parking lot. That always sounds a little shady, but, um, it was in a parking lot because she is up in the Akron area and I'm up there a couple of days a week with my grandchildren. And she's one of the very few individuals that I've met or come across that was willing to donate art and tell her story. I have, I have a lot of, I, I mean, I've had art donated for the fundraisers, but people won't put their names on it. They're amazing. I mean, just, and I mean, I couldn't imagine the story behind it. I, I would get bits and pieces, but they would not put their name on it. And they would not tell their story because they're in the community. They work, they're professionals, they have struggles and they don't want that stigmatism. But Melissa, um, you know, had wrote something down and it says, "I have struggled with depression often all my whole life. I was embarrassed and ashamed to ask for help, so I hid it well. After having a brain tumor and facing some other life challenges, my symptoms became serious and I knew I had to get help. Art and art therapy, along with my amazing therapist, has probably saved my life. Art takes me to a place where I don't think about my depression. It distracts me from my negative thoughts. It is a great release to put feelings on paper. In a group setting, art therapy gave me a place to go. I felt I belonged and I fit in. I made connections with others and I never felt alone when I was there. I don't hide the fact that I have depression now. I learned it as an illness. I do not choose to have depression. It is no different than saying I have arthritis or I had a brain tumor. And I hope to see more art therapy groups started so others can be helped the same way I was." I have seen things over, over this past year that is, is so sad, so unbelievably sad. Little people, middle-aged people, older people, um, who just struggle. And they're in the system and they got lost in the system. And with having these two art therapists there, I could text every day of what is going on, how their programs are growing, how people want to be involved, how they're doing something and having a product that they are proud of. And, um, again, I think as a community, there are so many places that I was never even aware of that have these individuals and are asking for services. And, you know, they're the person next to you. They're the person who, and some of them don't even have homes. They don't even have homes. And they don't have the budgeting to have anything extracurricular, I guess you could say. And this just gives an alternative type of treatment in there. It enhances what we have and it is adding to what we have. And, you know, I even got a, I, I received a call the other day from Saint Nick's. And I went down there, there's a social worker and she works in like three or four schools. She has to bounce herself around and I met with them. And I says, you know, how, you, what, what do you need? Like, out of your hundred and seventy-nine students I think they have, I says, "How can we help you?" I says, "What grades do you want to focus on?" She goes, "All of them, all of them." And I says, "I just don't have the money to put somebody in here," you know? And they says, "A hundred and sixty-something fall within a struggling financial status to start with. They are way below the poverty line. They are way below the education line. They are in homes that, they don't even have homes and they're in, they've been in so many schools, so they just bounce around. They bounce around, they're at an aunt's, they're at a grandmother's, they're wherever they may be. And there is no stability, you know? And they find that safe spot there. And they have had programs and unfortunately, you know, let's face it, what's the first thing that gets cut? Usually art, music, you know, any of those types of enhancements, I guess you would call them. So we says, you know, "We're going to see what we can do." I says, "I'll, you know, I'll figure it out. I'll figure this out somehow to get at least to target certain groups of some of her individuals that are truly struggling." You know, and they don't have their, they don't even, if somebody's sick, you can't call the family because nobody has a car. Nobody has a car to come and get them. You put them on the bus, you send them home. And it, like I said, it's, it's things that I guess as a parent, you know, it just breaks your heart when you've had so many advantages in your life. So, um, again, we are at the point now to where we are growing the programs we have. We are getting outreach from the community and trying to provide those services to them. Um, and I'm working, trying to get some arts, just on some of the ugly walls downtown. Some of the areas that need art. They need wings. They need wings. They need beautiful wings where you can stand in the middle. Absolutely. And feel like you are somebody. So, um, I would, and I'll, let's talk to Jody for a bit. She's from Potential Development. She, her and Megan are just lovely people. And they have helped me from the beginning and truly, like I says, is a very main focus of mine, so.
Do you want to bring your art, bring your students? Do you want to?
Yeah, she, uh. She, unfortunately, you know, it's.
Fortunately, we could not bring them.
It's a little difficult.
Yes, yes, yes. We have some little characters. This is one of our classrooms, um, at Potential Development and, um, they have a great time doing this piece. So, uh, we felt that, um, Helping Hands and that's what Terry does with us every day. So she provided art. Oh, I'm sorry, I can be loud. So Terry has really kind of come in and swooped us up and, and, um, helped these kids, children with autism. We are preschool to high school and she's helped every level. Um, there's not a time when I can't call Terry and say, "Hey, they're doing reindeers today. You have anything for me?" And she'll make sure she has it ready and, and, and down for us and, and, and enjoys our kids as well. Um, at the high school, she has put in an art room and for these kids who are, um, so creative and so, uh, need a place to emotionally, um, uh, get into their art and, uh, to feel free and have wings, as she says. Um, uh, it has been a great outlet for us. So she's supplied a whole new art room and I welcome all to come and see it and come down and take a tour at Potential and see it. All the lives she has touched, um, every day she does, there's always artwork that's coming up that the kids are doing that, uh, supplies have come from Terry and that inspiration. that the kids are doing, that supplies have come from Terry, and that inspiration has come from her. So we're very fortunate to have her. Thank you very much.
So one of your students did these.
So how many? In our classrooms, we have five to seven students. So each of the students did their own hand. So each of them were a different color. They chose their color, where they wanted to place it. It is a rainbow, it is a rainbow. It's a rainbow of hope, a rainbow of love.
The funny thing with Pot, with Potential is when they call me and they, you know, need stuff, is that certain classes, you can't send paintbrushes, because they can't stand the touch. Something, you have to send string. They'll dip the string and put it on the paper. But they, they're not tactile, you know what I mean? They can't, or some, you know, are very nonverbal. So there's other things you send. Now, I, a lot of times I'll ask the therapist, because we, again, don't have one in there, you have to use the right mediums, because if you don't, you're gonna set them up for failure. And that is something even in the mental health realm, you're not gonna sit down with them and do the same thing with everybody in the class. That is sometimes more detrimental, because again, they're already coming in there feeling they have no self-worth, now they're looking at something they can't do, and now feel even worse about themselves, you know? So there is a lot more, you know, that goes, that goes into it. And, you know, with Melissa's, she has worked in so many different areas. And this one's Melissa's, and this one is also, and she just started a year ago.
Well, she's here.
Yes, she is here. She's right in the back next to Jody. And when I met her in the parking lot, we exchanged art. And I, she says, I says, "Oh, my gosh." She says, "Well, I just started this a year ago." I says, "Listen, honey, if I would've started art a year ago, it would..." No, no, it, no. And, but there's something that is there, you know? And of course, our Justin, who I want him to be my boyfriend, to be honest, because he does art.
Does your husband know that?
Yes, yes, that's his, both of those are Justin's, and this one's Justin's. And he, he, you know, he does art, and he's so nice, and he makes milkshakes. That's his job, he makes milkshakes, sacred shakes. So who, who wouldn't want, who wouldn't love him, you know?
That's amazing.
This is amazing.
All of them.
Justin is, and he is on the spectrum of autism. And, yes, he, when he did those, and he, and I've said it before, he has named every person in those pictures. Every person in there has a birth date. They have a name, they have a function. You know, some of them I think date, I'm not sure. But when, and this one he did, which is amazing, and so representative of Mahoney, of the Mahoney Valley. And then this year, bless his heart, he asked his mom, when he was donating, you know, art again, and he asked his mom about, you know, why the foundation and that. And she was trying, she went and explained the street art, and he says, "I'm gonna do street art." And in the mind, in his mind, everything is very linear. And that's what he did. He made the walls, the brick walls. And then he did a tag. He had his own sayings on there with his lettering. And then he had his individuals there on the walls as his mural. And then he even developed a few new people, you know, which I was honored to be part of these new individuals. And that piece right there is Mr. Mistovich, and he just recently passed, bless his heart, yes. Mr. Mistovich was very big in the county. His wife Joyce, the art, yeah, she's up at the Butler. And it was such a shame that several years ago, he developed Alzheimer's really bad. And he was an artist prior to that. And when, you know, as with Alzheimer's, you decline, you forget. You know, he never forgot art, and he never stopped doing art. And he did that literally last year.
And that was, that's...
That, yeah, he always did abstract, yes. And when he, his art actually, like I said, he couldn't remember anything, and, you know, and he struggled, but never stopped doing art, or never forgot his art. And people looked at that like, "Oh, it's a color splattered on it." I mean, that's what my mother would say. I'll be honest, that's what my mother would say. And I'm like, "You don't understand what was behind that." And that's the whole idea. And I think that, you know, that we're trying to get over that hump of people understanding what art therapy actually is. And to acknowledge that it is a profession. So, so there you go.
You know what Terry, I have to say is, because I'm so happy, my, that my wife and I went to the fundraiser, to B and L. And Carol alerted me this morning, because she told me last night, "Make sure you bring your pictures in that you bought at the fundraiser." We bought six. And, and they're all different artists, and they're all different looks. You know, some from, you know, a woman's face, the young lady that painted the cat.
Oh, yes, she's a lady, yeah.
She painted one of a woman's face. And then we have one that's very abstract like that, that looks like they put it on with a putty knife, you know? And, and it's, it's black and red, and it's, it's very colorful. And my wife's, we came home, and my wife put the one that's very colorful up in the half-bath in our, when you walk in. She put the one up in the family room. We have all of them hanging. And I got the one that has like three clowns that were on it, that one of them painted, you know? And, and it's, it's very, you know, if you look at it, it looks like, you know, Bozo the Clown, but there, there's a lot more to it than that. And there's, and it's just amazing. I have that one hanging in my office at home. And, you know, they're all so different, and they're all so unique. And just like you're saying, when you look at that, they all tell a story so much more than, you know...
But when you look at it, you, you appreciate the art. I mean, it's a, it is something that's, that's there.
And like Anthony said, coming from someone that, I can't draw a straight line.
Oh, yeah.
And my sister has a ton of artistic ability, and she does nothing with it, you know? And, you know, some people just have that, and some people feel that, and do it for all different reasons. But God bless you and the organization, and the foundation, and all the people that teach and participate. You know, it's so amazing.
Well, we're getting there, we're trying.
Terry, bring the artists up that are here.
Yeah, well, Justin and Melissa. This is mine from Melissa. Come on up, Justin, and Melissa and Jody.
That's amazing.
Oh, this one, I bought this one, you can't have it, but I bought this one. Justin, this here, this is Melissa, Jody, Miss Jody. All right.
Take a picture with the art.
Here you go. Here we go, we'll do it this way to make it easier.
And then that one is mine.
Yes, this one's mine. Hold this one, I love this one. She wouldn't sell it, but I told her I wasn't gonna give it back.
In our room. Melissa, the butterfly.
Yeah. You bought this one, this one, and it's a butterfly. This one's mine, I bought this.
I bought Justin's.
Justin's, Potential's, and Melissa's. Oh, let me get it right.
You bought four?
No.
And I, those will be, those will be hung down here.
I think we should auction them off here today. Maybe we could pay more than Carol paid, and get one of those pictures off of her. I'm ready. Would you like to turn it this way to Mr. Roller? There we go. Terry, are any of these for sale here or no?
Well, you know what? I bought that one for my sister for her 50th birthday, but who cares? If you want to buy it, yes. But no, and that one is, yes, that one is too, yes.
I'm interested.
And that one, Melissa, the butterfly one, that's just the peace, butterflies mean peace and love.
Yeah, she does an amazing job. She, I saw a lot of...
And then, and then my art, my, my county, my city person over there painted Youngstown's old steel...
Hey, I'm an old Youngstown sheet and tube guy, Jason.
Justin. Very kind. Beautiful job. All of them are nice, very nice.
The rainbow effect, which is a new day and a bright future. Yeah, right?
It is kind of unusual. I kind of, like, how do I explain this? I consider this my hardest piece. My reason being, I was actually trying to, you know, I wanted to make a world that's designed with steampunk for Simon here. And in development, I was slowly realizing, wait, I made him German. And I'm like, okay, so I've, I've gotta make it look a little bit, I gotta have that Ger, like, that Germany feel to it. And this is basically kind of a very unusual contrast I came up with. You know, you see this like bright visual feel here with all of the different, you know, housing and such. And then I kind of, for some unusual reason, I thought of maybe adding a little, just a slight bit of dystopia to the world, as you see here in the back. You can't see that it's a, it's kind of pollu, like a pollution in the world. It's very, it's a very kind of unusual feel. I, I actually, I just kind of thought it'd be cool to give a world for each of my characters. I never did full, do one for each of them. I did, I did this one, I did Simon, Petunia, and then Rainbow Laser. That's what I remember. And then I stopped in mid-process for Rose, but yeah.
I love you, Justin.
Creativity is Justin's, but he is a product of the educational service centers, effort, as he was coming up through school. And then he spent two years in the graphics program at the Career and Tech Center. So the amazing work that he does, it's all Mahoney County's support through his years in the public school system and through the Grand Tech Center.
MCCT is amazing, they have worked with me and done, the class took me on and has done the printing for me and designing. They're amazing out there, amazing facility.
After you could have some DeVito give you like an update on where the education came in and what the Helms Foundation did.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate everyone here, and I appreciate our, our artists that are here, and Terry, and your committee, you do an excellent job. We, the commissioners, are always here if you need us. We'll be here to help. And the green team, thank you. We're gonna have to go through with our meeting now. You're all welcome to stay for that if you'd like.
If anybody wants a cookie, come up to our meeting and grab one.
We'll do a coffee. We have coffee too, which I... Approval of the previous, you're welcome to do that. Approval of the previous minutes of board meeting number 47, Thursday, December 5th, 2019. And approval of bills for payment, do I hear a motion?
Some of the second, roll call.
Commissioner Tropic, yes. Commissioner Ditzler, Commissioner Remedio, yes.
Number one, do I hear a motion?
Some of the second.
Roll call. Number two, travels A, Auditor's Office, A, B, and C.
Good morning, commissioners. A, B, and C is for travel for the Auditor's Office, NDA Department, and GIS to travel within the state of Ohio and Pennsylvania for 2020.
Uh, D, Convention of Visitors Bureau.
Good morning. This is our blanket travel for 2020 to attend our association meetings, seminars, trainings, trade shows in the state of Ohio and Western Pennsylvania.
Thank you. Number two, travels A through D, do I hear a motion?
Some of the second, roll call.
Commissioner Tropic, yes. Commissioner Ditzler, yes. Commissioner Remedio, yes.
Number three, agreements, Connaught, please.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm well, how are you, Commissioner? Is an agreement with Youngstown, Thailand, for as of the removal of carpet and the restoring of the tile store in the chambers area between sport and non-general.
Thank you. B, Convention of Visitors Bureau, B, C, and D.
Yes, good morning again. Letter B is an agreement with ADRAK. We use them to help distribute our travel guide throughout the state of Ohio and in the travel information centers on interstates. This will be for the year 2020. Letter C, the same type of agreement with a different person. Lisa Underwood represents us at leisure travel shows, as well as the state fair, and gets our literature out into the hands of the traveling public. And letter D is an agreement with Mc Creek Metro Parks for promotion, advertising, and marketing of Mahoney County as a golf destination. We're gonna be partnering with them to attend the Michigan Golf Show, which you approved last week.
Thank you. E, engineers.
Good morning, commissioners. This is an agreement with Danukie Real Estate Investments for purchase of real property needed for the south to have an safety upgrade project, it's non-general.
Thank you. And F, lead.
It's an agreement with American Civil Construction for a chip wall repair on Southern Street, structures, it's non-general.
G is purchasing, Jimmy.
Commissioners, this is to provide a structure condition assessment of the tunnel between administration building and the courthouse. This is a precautionary measure with the 100-year spring and summer rain. Some of the pavers are starting to move away, and the water's starting to penetrate into the tunnel. So moving forward to make sure that it's safe, or whatever we have to do to ensure that it's safe.
Thank you. H and I, sanitary, Bill.
Hi, yes, good morning, commissioners. H is an agreement with Duke Sanitary Services. This is to remove debris from the wet well that's located at the Damascus wastewater treatment plant. This is an ongoing process that is determined based on the amount of flow that is coming into the treatment plant. So it could occur maybe twice, three times a year, just depending on flows. And this is debris that is removed prior to the water entering into the treatment plant, the processing. I is an agreement with Vantel and Associates, and that is to do upgrade, update of easements that we had already prepared for the I-point project. We need to make sure that the current values are what they are and need to be, and we're forced to move forward with acquiring those properties for our project.
Thank you. Number three, agreements, A to I, do I hear a motion?
Some of the second, roll call.
Commissioner Tropic, yes. Commissioner Ditzler, yes. Commissioner Remedio, yes.
Number four, A, change orders, lead.
The change order for American Civil Construction for bed and bed floor work.
Okay, thank you. Number four, change orders, A, do I hear a motion?
Some of the second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tropic, yes. Commissioner Ditzler, yes. Commissioner Remedio, yes.
Number one, resolutions additions, do I hear a motion?
Some of the second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tropic, yes. Commissioner Ditzler, yes. Commissioner Remedio, yes.
Number two, record of bids, sanitary, A.
Commissioners, we received three bids for the caustic soda and also the ferric chloride. For evaluating those bids, it appears right now that we may be doing business with each of the three vendors because of the different types of caustic soda and ferric chloride that is used at the different treatment plants. But we're finalizing the evaluation, and they will, we will be submitting a recommendation to the board.
Okay, thank you. Number two, record of bids, A, do I hear a motion?
Some of the second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tropic, yes. Commissioner Ditzler, yes. Commissioner Remedio, yes.
Number three, resolutions, commissioners, sanitary would be A, B, C. A is sanitary, commissioner's sanitary, okay, Bill, that's you.
Hi, yes, commissioners, as is the case with a lot of what happens in our department, we do encounter emergency situations. And in this case, we had a situation that developed at the end of October. The sanitary store manhole located in Cantfield Township and bordered Cantfield City. We had a greasing problem in the manhole. We needed to come in, remove the grease, take it to a landfill. This was done over a 24-hour period before we could actually have the purchase order issued based on the knowledge of the volume that we would be taking to the landfill. The purchase order did not come until after the work was completed, and we were invoiced by the public services.
Thank you. And B through F, O and B.
Commissioners, item B and C are the appropriation resolutions for the Mahoney County General Fund and the Mahoney County Terminal Administrator Justice Fund. The General Fund's appropriation resolution is $37,070,000, and the Justice Fund's appropriation is $29,850,000. I want to take this time to thank all elected officials and department heads who have worked with the commissioners in bringing this budget and bringing in a balanced budget. Some of the things that we had to do to balance the budget was moving some of those things that are one-time expensive, that we'll address with the carryover, and I'll bring that back to the commissioners after the beginning of the year. Some of the things that we knew we could support by revenue, additional revenue that was coming in due to changes at the state, we'll make those adjustments also at the beginning of the year. I thank the commissioners again for everything in bringing this into balance going into 2020. Item number D is a resolution authorizing a special recording of casino revenue. Since 2012, the commissioners have set up a resolution to build a stabilization reserve in the general fund. And in that resolution, they have 60% of the casino revenue going towards a stabilization reserve. The general fund has net debt stabilization reserve, which is 1/6 of your prior expenditures. So the commissioners decided... So the Commissioners, um, decided that they're gonna start building a stabilization reserve in our Justice Fund also. Um, that helps with our bond ratings, that helps with cash flow needs until the funds come in, um, and also emergency things that happen with one-time, um, I think that could happen that we would need to access that. So that provides stability for both funds. Uh, last year, they were able to put eight hundred thousand aside to the stabilization reserve in the Criminal Justice Fund. This, uh, what they're doing now is that um forty percent of casino revenue will remain in the General Fund, sixty percent will go to the Justice Fund with half of that going towards building stabilization reserve. Um, that, again, brings stability in those funds. Um, item F is a resolution approving a moral obligation payment. Um, this is for six hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is in relationship to the Commissioners, uh, review and preparing for the the um transfer of the property for the YDC property, uh, for the campus of care, um, that they're working on right now with area agencies. And the digital development is one of those agencies that will be, um, actually at the campus too, so.
And there are a few others that weren't involved in that.
Yes.
Uh, G, Dog Pound?
Uh, oh, thank you.
Dog Wardens.
Oh, I missed one. Thank you, Lou. I missed E. This is a resolution regarding fixing the time, place, where the view, the view and final hearing of proposed petition to vacate a part of an unmade, um, thirty-foot alley in Borman Township. Um, and then E would be for Dog Pound. There's a resolution supporting appointment from part-time to full-time of a deputy dog warden and kennel supervisor. Um, there were two vacancies there, were coming in the Dog Pound, and those individuals are moving up into full-time positions.
Okay, thank you. And H, Engineers?
Yes. Um, this is a resolution requiring a necessary public use to appropriate, um, to acquire temporary construction easements or certain portions of property for the making, constructing, repairing, widening the South Avenue project.
Okay, thank you. And I, this one.
Morning, Commissioners. This is a resolution support grant application, uh, for USDA road development grant in the pipeline.
Okay, thank you. And um, that concludes the business portion of our meeting, and I know this meeting was- Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't gonna approve those. How about that? Motion to approve. Resolution, so some of the-
Some of the second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tropican?
Yes.
Mr. Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedio Ordebe?
Yes. Well, I jumped ahead of that, but um, that concludes the business portion of the meeting. Uh, I know this, this meeting was a little longer than most, but um, with the great things that we have to showcase, everyone in Mahoney County that is a part of this government, which is, would be our offices, like the Green Team and their staff, for such a wonderful job with the young people. I mean, I've never seen the participation in in the schools as that I've seen when I come to being a county commissioner. There are so many things that that you, your team does up there, Lou and Teg and Franny and and all, Mary Ren and Irene and everyone else that's there, that participates in this with the young people because they're the future. We have to keep them connected to somewhat of a positive feeling for government. And in doing that, we bring them down here and the three of us would showcase whatever they do. And they're always welcome. Terry, in your group and and everybody that brought artwork in, that that's another portion of our community, that we are all family, that within Mahoney County, we have to showcase everyone as one person and and appreciate what they do as well. And art is expression, no matter how you do it. It's the expression of you, your inside thoughts, your your love and your feelings for for what you want to say. And that and music are taught. So I congratulate you and commend you on the job that you've done in one year. You've come a long way and it was a very successful fundraiser. I want to thank the parents and and everyone that are here. Everything's great. I mean, we, I really appreciate the fact that you've come down. And by the time we get done, we'll have artwork all over this building. So we'll become the new Butler. So let's keep on movement. Dave and Anthony?
No, I just want to echo the sentiments of Carol. Um, you know, I tried artwork years ago and it just isn't happening in in my book. You know, I give myself expression through music. Uh, I found playing the guitar, uh, for for many, many years was my outlet. And as I see here today, uh, the fine work that is on display here due to the good work of the Helms Foundation and Terry and and the parents here, uh, I am totally impressed. I think this is amazing. I didn't realize the talent, uh, that we do have. And art is a form of expression, it's a way of speaking. Some people can speak certain ways, but other people do it through various other talents. And that's why we have to tap into individuals and let them give us our expression. And that's why it's so important that we have organizations and programs that allow our people here in the valley to do that. So I will continue to support, uh, the Helms Foundation and what you do. And uh, to all the artists here, uh, it's amazing, uh, what you've accomplished. And I wished I could do a quarter of, uh, what you painted. I wished you had another, uh, artwork of the butterfly and and the still mill there. I would love to have purchased that myself.
Go right back and paint it.
So if you make it out-
Bring it down here next week.
Bring it down. And real quick-
And bring it back.
I've been dealing with a local artist, um, by the name of Quincy Henderson. I don't know if any of you know him, but I have a bunch of artwork in my office that this young man did, uh, himself, of AC/DC and some of the rock stars that I went to, you know, grew up with in the eighties.